Ready. I call to order this meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education Agenda 851, 6:30 PM, November the 11th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer, Mr. Dean Jackson, to bring your recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, the board members. We have two recognitions tonight, and the first one, I think, is a bit of a treat because our core business is brought to us by the Smoky Road Middle School Chorus. I'm going to call on Principal David Dement to introduce.
Good evening. I'm David Dement from Smoky Road Middle School. Recognizing that the five-year Coweta County School System Strategic Plan emphasizes and measures advanced opportunities for all students that encourages creativity, innovation, and collaborative problem solving. We at Smoky Road have identified the importance of implementing effective, high-impact learning strategies where students are given opportunities to collaborate, practice, and create while receiving timely feedback, which is heard, understood, and actionable. This is a point of emphasis in our school improvement plan for the 25-26 school year. In recognition of Veterans Day and as part of our school improvement initiatives, Mrs. Ritchie, our chorus teacher, is here with six of our students this evening to share a couple examples of the work that is being produced by her students to help us accomplish these goals. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Ritchie. I'm the choral director at Smoky Road Middle School. Today, I'm excited to introduce a special group of students called the Smoke Gets. This group is made up of seventh and eighth graders who auditioned to be a part of our Advanced Three-Part Harmony Ensemble. The members of the Smoke Gets are Gabby Becker, Riley Lynch, well, let me go from left to right, Gabby Becker, Leah McRae, Savannah Terrell, um, Terrell, sorry, Riley Lynch, Harper Roberts, and Emma Hansen. Over the past two years, these students have demonstrated incredible dedication and musical skill through their performances and sight-reading abilities. Last year, all six of them were part of the group that earned superior ratings at Georgia's Large Group Performance Evaluation. I'm so blessed to have the opportunity to teach students with so much talent and musicianship. They always try their hardest to improve their performances with the feedback I give, and also, they are constantly thinking critically and self-evaluating to improve their own performances. I recognize the importance of students being able to work collaboratively and transfer skills they learn in the class to their performance. In order to master our standards and chorus, these students apply their skills in our advanced group to sing songs a cappella and in three-part harmony. Today, they will demonstrate their sight-reading skills by singing an example they have never seen before tonight. They transfer these skills every day in class when they learn their new music. So we will also show you a final product of Boogie Woogie Bugle Boy.
Boogie woogie, boogie woogie. He was a famous trumpet man from out Chicago way. He had a boogie style that no one else could play. He was the top man of his craft. But then his number came up and he was gone with the draft. He's in the army now, a blowin' revoli. He's the boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B. They made him blow a bugle for his Uncle Sam. It really brought him down because he couldn't jam. The captain seemed to understand. Because the next day, the cap went out and dropped to the band. And now the company jumps when he plays revoli. He's the boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B.
A toot.
A toot, a tootily and a tooty blows an eight to the bar. In boogie rhythm, he can't blow a notes unless the bass and guitar is playing with them. He makes the company jump when he plays revoli. He's the boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B.
He was a boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B. And when he plays boogie woogie bugle, he is busy as a bizbee. And when he plays, he makes the company jump an eight to the bar.
He's the boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B. He blows an eight to the bar. Can't play a note.
Unless the bass and guitar is playing with them.
He makes the company jump when he plays revoli. He's the boogie woogie bugle boy of Company B.
Bravo, well done, great tempo, and thank you for recognizing our veterans. I appreciate that, thank you. How difficult do you find it in sight-reading?
I think it's pretty easy, like, once you, like, know the notes and the rhythms, then it's, like, pretty easy to get handling, like, to get the hang of, like, once you have a partner to do it with, then you can overdo it with them, and it's pretty easy.
That's a great answer. You did really well. I was watching you study. Y'all did really great.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Our next recognition tonight is of the Coweta Industrial Fellowship for Teachers. I'm going to call on Dr. Donald White to come down to present and introduce.
Thanks. I'll just head on out now. Yeah. No, you don't want that. Y'all, it is always an honor to come before you with the great things that are happening in Coweta County, and one of the things that I love about working in Coweta County School System is our commitment to innovation, that we are committed to innovative programs that involve our students and our teachers. The Coweta Industrial Fellowship for Teachers program is a partnership between Coweta County School System teachers and local businesses and local government organizations that encourages teachers to expand their understanding of the skills and knowledge that are required for the workplace and the amazing things that are going on in Coweta County as far as our industry is concerned. We started the Coweta Industrial Fellowship for Teachers in 2015 with some help from the Noonan Development Authority. Haskell Craver called me up and said, hey, I've heard about this great program that is happening in other places, and I want it to happen here in Coweta County. And I said, well, Haskell, that is a program that I, that mirrors a program I participated in at Georgia Tech called the Gift Program, the Georgia Industrial Fellowships for Teachers Program, and that program is still active today. So we replicated that with our local businesses. The teachers had to apply to become part of the Industrial Fellowship program. We have grades one through 12 represented by the teachers that you're going to meet tonight, and I want to introduce you to some of them, and they're going to share some of their experience, and I think you will find that it is a fascinating experience and a transformative experience for our teachers. So I'll, I'll call you guys down as I'm calling you down, y'all just come on. All right, Kaitlin Armstrong, Mallory Berry, Amanda Bowles, Julie Hiltz, Tracy Miller, Holly Perry, Danielle Ratslaff, Lauren Solan, Kristy Whitson, and Kelly Zern, and they're going to tell you a little bit about their experiences.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to share our incredible experience with you. Ms. Whitson and I, first of all, I'm Kaitlin Armstrong, sorry. Ms. Whitson and I had the privilege of working with the Grinzenbach Corporation through this program, and we had an absolutely life-changing experience witnessing how the things we teach in our elementary school classrooms directly translate to the skills that our students are going to need when they enter the workforce right here in Coweta County. In addition to the importance of soft skills that we all were reminded of throughout this experience, Ms. Whitson and I both were able to make connections to math standards we cover in our classrooms. In her first-grade classroom, Ms. Whitson was able to recreate the manufacturing process we witnessed on the shop floor by asking her students to build robots that met specific measurement requirements and helped them make connections to place value. In my fifth-grade math classroom, I'm always looking for ways to prove to my students that they will, in fact, use what I'm teaching them in their future. And watching the engineers at Grinzenbach convert the dimensions of the projects that they were working on gave me a fantastic example of our measurement standards in action right here in Noonan.
Thank you, guys, all for letting us share, and thank you to Grinzenbach for giving us the opportunity to come into their company.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie Hiltz, this is Holly Pelley. We had the opportunity to work with Blickla, and I believe it was their first year working with the program. So as an eighth-grade math teacher, I really kind of framed it in the idea of looking at, you know, the mathematical standards of practice, and so, when we were working with the groups the day we were on the assembly floor, we were upstairs, you know, in the programming part, we were downstairs trying to figure out how to move a mobile MRI machine with, on wheels, it was pretty cool. But anyway, looking at that attention to detail, thinking about how we can translate it into our classroom, and also, we caught, had a lot of conversations as parents and as community members, like, how we could share that information with our own kids and also the students that we teach every day. So we talked about that attention to detail, operating in a safe environment, executing tasks with precision and efficiency, especially in math, so critical. We also talked about perseverance and time management and how we kind of push through when things are hard and meeting solutions, tailoring solutions to meet the unique needs of each problem. So we had a great week with them. I learned more about wheels that week than I ever knew was possible.
Wheels are in here somewhere.
Right, so many wheels and rollers, but, I mean, it was a great experience, and we were very fortunate to be a part of it, so we want to thank you for your support.
Absolutely, thank you.
My name is Kelly Zern, and this is Danielle Ratslaff, and this summer, we had the privilege of spending a week at Cargill in Noonan, where we gained valuable insights into their operations, their culture, and their leadership. Throughout our time there, one of the most powerful takeaways we had was about the accountability and problem-solving that is done every day there. At Cargill, accountability begins with showing up, both physically and mentally. Employees are expected to be present, focused, and engaged throughout their workday. As we toured the facility, we noticed that workers on the production line were attentive and fully immersed in their task without phones or other distractions. In an environment where safety is paramount, especially around knives and large machinery, this level of focus is essential. In addition to being present, employees are also expected to communicate effectively. These lessons, being accountable, attentive, and communicative, are ones we've brought back to our classroom at both the middle and high school level. If you want to succeed in the workplace, you must show up and communicate clearly. Another key theme we observed was the importance of problem-solving. Cargill encourages employees to speak up when they see opportunities to improve a process, empowering them to think critically and take ownership of their work. We were impressed by their approach to, to growth. When an employee struggles, Cargill doesn't view it as a failure, they view it as a chance to help them improve, offering mentorship and guidance. So this mindset of accountability, communication, and continuous improvement is one that we hope to continue to instill in our students. Thank you.
And we do thank Cargill for inviting us, and they gave us free steak, too.
I'm Lauren Solan, I'll be speaking for the Yamaha group. When most people think of career readiness, they picture college campuses, dorm rooms, and late-night study sessions, but at Yamaha, opportunity starts much earlier. Right out of high school, students can step into real careers in engineering, business, marketing, and human resources. It's not just about building engines, it's about building futures. What really stuck with us, though, was the culture that Yamaha operates. It's less like a corporate machine and more like a team jam session. Everyone has a part to play, and every voice matters. Like any good band, growth is part of the gig. Yamaha encourages continuing education, internal promotions, and trying out new instruments, so to speak. They want, they want employees who are curious, adaptable, and always learning. At the heart of this philosophy is called kaizen, which was a word we learned very quickly and used quite a bit, the Japanese word for continuous improvement. It's basically their secret sauce, and the process goes something like this. Step one is to plan what needs to be improved. Step two is do a small-scale task or test. Step three is check the results, and step four is act on what you learned, and if it doesn't work, tweak it and try again. Sound familiar? It's the same reflective cycle we use in teaching, plan, do, act. Or, in teacher terms, plan the lesson, try it, see how it goes, collect data, and adjust before tomorrow's bell rings. For us, teachers visiting Yamaha wasn't just a week-long field trip, it was a reminder that the skills we teach in our classrooms really do matter. Collaboration, critical thinking, and perseverance, these are not just soft skills, they're the heart of what companies like Yamaha and other companies are looking for. It was inspiring to see our students' potentials reflected in such a dynamic workplace and to see ourselves as part of that same cycle of a continuous improvement. We left not only impressed, but energized to bring the kaizen mindset back to our schools.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Miller, and I just want to, on behalf of our entire group, in conclusion, say thank you all, thank you for letting us share with you, but we also want to thank our community partners. They were the City of Noonan, the Noonan Development Authority, the Coweta County Development Authority, the Electric Cities of Georgia, and the CEC. They all provided great support, and we appreciate them as we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
I just want to add a thank you from the board for you all giving up a week of your summer to, to go do this, and certainly to those, to those community partners and the Development Authority folks that we have here tonight. Glad y'all are here, and thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October the 14th, 2025?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, Mr. Copeland, seven to zero. But, Dr. Horton, action items, group one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have for you in group one is to approve the meeting dates, times, and locations for Board of Education meetings for 2026. Beginning January 26th through December of '26, the Coweta County Board of Education regular meetings will be held on the dates listed below at 6:30 PM here at 167 Wears Industrial Boulevard. Those dates are January 13th, February 10th, March 10th, April 14th, May the 12th, June 2nd, and please note that that date is changed to the first Tuesday in June due to the GSBA Summer Conference date change. July 14th, August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, November 10th, and December 8th. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended the dates he just covered for the 2026 Board of Education meetings. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is the approval of some new course requests. Noonan High School is requesting the addition of AP World History, pre-AP Biology, and pre-AP Chemistry. If approved, these courses will be available for all base high schools, and you can see the course descriptions there for pre-AP Biology, pre-Chemistry, and AP World History. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended approval for three new course requests, a pre-AP Chemistry, pre-AP Biology, and a AP World History. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I, I got a question. Dr. Horton, were those the current teachers teaching those, or those current?
Yes, ma'am, current, current staff members teaching them, and no additional staff required.
All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is a resolution declaring election results from 2025, from last week. Approval of a resolution of the Board of Education of the County County School System declaring the results of an election determining the continuation of a 1% sales and use tax for educational purposes and issuance of general obligation debt and for other related purposes. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval. A copy of the resolution is attached.
Superintendent has recommended approval of the resolution declaring the results of the, I'll call it, the East Blosst vote last week. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Very quick one, just wanted to say again, or publicly to the citizens of Coweta, we appreciate greatly you all approving the East Blosst once again. Your trust in us as a board and our superintendent and staff to be good stewards of taxpayer funds doesn't go unnoticed by, by me and the rest of the board, and just want you to know, we greatly appreciate that, so thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero.
The last item I have for you in group one is the adoption of resolutions for work that's been completed at Noonan High School. These resolutions will certify that all accounts for labor, materials, and services for construction on the following: Noonan High School, the roof for building 6010, which is State Project Number 23-638-002; Noonan High School, the roof for building 6,000 HVAC, 6,000, State Project 23-638-002; Noonan High School roof for building 5080, it's State Project 23-638-002; gym renovations for building 6,000, it's the same State Project number, and the Noonan High School gym renovations for building 5080, 5,300, and 6010 HVAC. Also, the renovations at building 5,300, 6010, and all of State Project Number 23-638-002. The resolutions are attached. If these are approved, they will be forwarded to the Georgia Department of Education. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended approval to adopt the resolutions for the work completed at Noonan High School, as was just covered. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. I understand we have no group-two items for bids or no group-three items for trills, so on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Mr. Keith Chapman, to bring your board report and your sales tax. Mr. Chapman.
Board report, we've completed 33.33% of the year. We've expended 33.70% of the budget, about as close as we can be. We are in, in two reserves a little bit there. We do project to go into reserves at the end of the year at this point, so, not terrible, but would be a small amount. Sales tax, good collections, again, just under 3.5 million, 5.15% increase over the prior year.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. This time, I'll call on Dr. Kemp to bring your staff and student attendance. Dr. Kemp.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. For the third attendance reporting period of the school year, the school with the highest staff attendance was Madras Middle School. The highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. The highest elementary student attendance was Arbor Springs Elementary. The highest middle school student attendance was Blake Bass Middle School, and the highest high school student attendance goes to home of the Vikings, Northgate High School.
Board members, for this month's board goal report, I'd like to call once again on CCSS Director of Assessment Accountability, Dr. Gillian Andrew. She's going to give you an update on CCRPI and Promise Act schools. CCRPI is embargoed until 3 AM tomorrow, but we're going to, going to do the best we can, so, Dr. Andrew.
Yes, tomorrow, we will receive our CCRPI component scores. There are several areas to celebrate once we get those scores officially in, and then there are also some areas that we're going to provide targeted support. As you are aware, last year, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement released a Promise Act list identifying schools whose two-year average for the overall CCRPI score fell in the bottom quartile for the state. Last year's list included five of our schools, and the district has made it a priority to provide targeted support to these teams and their efforts to increase student achievement. Support has included high-quality professional development on high-impact strategies, as well as dedicated instructional coaching to assist with successful implementation of those strategies. With the release of the new CCRPI data, we are proactively estimating which schools we think will exit the list due to their success, and also anticipating potentially which schools may fall into that bottom quartile. Our school's immediate action plan has been to partner with all of our schools, establishing an intentional district-wide instructional professional learning focus through visible learning. We've provided essential resources to every teacher in our district, coupled with widespread professional learning on how to effectively select and implement these proven high-impact strategies. Based on what we estimate may be the bottom quartile, we've put into place already a multi-phase plan designed to offer focused partnership and resources to administrators and teachers. This collaborative process is entirely about empowering our school teams to deeply understand specific data, ensure that their school improvement plan effectively addresses any specific data, ensure that their school improvement plan effectively addresses any areas of need indicated by the data, and collaboratively monitor the implementation of the action plan, offering immediate responsive support. All steps recommended in our accreditation report. Regardless of lists or designations, our district's work is driven by our mission of commitment to student success, our vision for empowering every student, and our fundamental beliefs in strong partnerships, accountability, and continuous improvement. Thank you.
Board members, I will just mention, you heard the word estimate and you heard the word may several times. That bottom quartile is a moving target and we don't have clear numbers. There is no flat line of where that's going to fall. So, we're in the process of estimating who may come off the list, who may go onto the list, based on what we think the numbers will be tomorrow. I want to just emphasize to you, list or no list, the work doesn't change. Now, there are extra supports or additional supports that we do provide to schools that do end up on the list, which has been expanded since it was originally passed last year, but the work doesn't change. That continuous improvement process, those expectations do not change, although when a school does find itself on the list, we do provide additional support to it. Some of that is in the way of staff, some of it is in the way of additional professional learning through our impact check process and other things. So, I just want to emphasize, it's a, we don't know. And we may not know tomorrow because the list is being formulated still, so we'll see where it goes.
And Dr. Horton?
Yes, sir.
And this is, they potentially could get on that list if there's two years of what they're deeming as not successful or not meeting that criteria mark?
It depends on a school's performance in relation to the rest of the state because you could have a school that finds itself in the bottom 25% one year, improves very well, and exits the list, or scores across the state could increase across the board and the line of demarcation changes. Glanton is a great example of that. Glanton actually improved in its scores, found itself on the list, and we're optimistic that Glanton, I hate to call them out, but this is a good way to call them out. We think they're going to get off the list based on what we've seen. It's almost impossible for us to reasonably predict exactly what it's going to look like.
And then just a quick follow-up. So, that, because I know when it passed, it was, like you said, there were certain criteria, and then the criteria was added upon. Will we, as far as our schools go, are they judged on this new criteria? So, for instance, if they didn't make it, if they weren't on the list this year, but they were, but their criteria would deem them last year, this new criteria deems them to be below last year, is that only going to impact? Kind of what I'm saying is, okay, thank you, please help me because this is...
You're not going to like my answer because my answer is, that is a wonderful question.
Yeah.
It's the average of two years, overall CCRPI score, so you've got to be...
Relation to everybody else.
Yeah, and then the bottom quartile of the state, so the bottom 25%. So, part of the reason we're optimistic for Glanton is their increases have been so great that we feel confident that they would not fall into the bottom quartile. Of course, we don't know what that number is yet.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll just wait and see.
I would like to add, because I know exactly where Andrew is going, because we followed this House Bill 340 so closely, and for those that don't know, it's the Georgia Promise Scholarship. So, if you choose for your child not to attend public education, you get $6,500 to follow your child to go to a school of your choice, be homeschooled or be it private school. So, that money would come out of the public school. And we watched House Bill 340 and all the details, and the criteria for the schools in each district did change. I don't even think the Gold Dome or the state legislators knew what their criteria was going to be, and I still don't think they know. And that's just me being strong opinionated because I do not like the bill. But I think to say that any of our schools, that there were five on the list, there were none on the list, I think it's ever liquid-changing, and I think it's sad when the state has to come and say, "You're not successful," when every one of our schools are successful, just so that they can pitch the Promise Scholarship to those wishing to leave public school.
And if I recall correctly, wasn't it last year that the list was released and then pulled back because...
Several times.
Who knows why? You know, it was, it's all a black magic kind of thing. So, yeah, I do know I have heard from some statewide educators that, if I get it right, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, it's the most highly respected organization in the state government.
Wow, you went there, Buzz. I wasn't going to say that, but wow, yeah.
I'll try to close this out by saying, we're working, we are working as hard as we can, and we're not waiting on a school to get on a list before we...
That's right.
Before we implement and make change. So, we'll end it there. CCRPI does come out tomorrow, and then we hope, over the course of the next several weeks, last year was Thanksgiving week, we got that first list, so we'll see if we stay on that same timeline. The next item I have for you is just a draft of a policy to sit on the table for the next 30 days. It's a draft policy to comply with OCGA 20-2-324.8, also known as the Distraction-Free Education Act. If approved, it'll sit for 30 days, or you don't have to approve it, it'll sit for 30 days for review and comment, and then would take effect per the terms of the law on July the 1st of 2026. Also attached, board members, the Georgia Department of Education guidance document for you that was used to develop this policy. Basically, what the policy says and what the law says is that students in K through eight, beginning on July 1 of 2026, will not be permitted to access or use personal electronic devices while on school premises during school hours. Board members, I will tell you that if this policy is approved after sitting on the table, it won't represent a massive change for us because most of our K-8 schools already, in anticipation of this law becoming, or going into effect this coming July, already implement that during the school day. So, the policy's there for your review. Welcome any feedback that any of you or any member of the public may have over the course of the next 30 days before I bring it to you for formal approval. Mr. Chair, the last item I have for you tonight is the Facilities and Construction Report. You can see, we have finally moved on Noonan High School. We are just waiting to get the final paper request processed. We got a few warranty items. The door hardware that's been on our list for several months was finally installed, and I know Ms. Ingram was happy about that. Central Educational Center, contractors requested we move the trailers behind the school, so that is in process now, and they're going to get out and complete their lay-down area to get ready and start that project by December 3rd. Just waiting on closeout documents on a few of the projects we did over the summer, that Arnold re-roof on the kitchen, shield projects, the central office modifications, and Northgate High School hitting facility. Working on some repairs on the Parent Resource Center next to Atkins Elementary, had some structural issues that we had to tend to on the columns on the front porch there. So, that work has been progressing along. Columns are actually being constructed now. Over this coming summer, we hope to bring to you for approval several renovation projects that Southern A&amp;E has begun design work on. Those are at Arnold Middle School, Jefferson Parkway, Thomas Crossroads Elementary School, hoping to get those rolling and bring them to you for approval after the design process here in the next couple of months. Mr. Chair, that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Horton. At this time, every month, we set aside time for public comments. Tonight, we have two speakers signed up to address us. We'd like to run through the, read the rules real quick that each speaker has agreed to when they signed the form to speak. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond, if he or she wishes, for a period of no longer than one minute each. Only citizens of Coweta County or employees of the Coweta County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. Excuse me. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance procedure set forth in the board's personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. The chairman of the board or other presiding officer in the absence of the chairman is responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting, and requests to speak at the public comment portion of the meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. And I will just call the two speakers in the order that have the forms. First is Amanda Tucker, if I'm reading that last name correctly.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Tucker. I am a parent of two daughters that attend school in this district. Back on September 13, 2022, I came before you all to speak about implementing an app that would allow parents to track the location of their child's school bus, specifically to see where the bus is before it arrives at the stop. Over the years, I noticed many students standing at the bus stops in the cold and rain, sometimes for a long period of time, when the bus is running late. Often, parents do not receive the text alerts that are supposed to notify us of these delays through the bus bulletin. I'm here tonight to ask if this ideal is still being considered or planned for our school district. Several nearby districts, including Fulton, Troop, Douglas, Henry, Cobb, and Atlanta Public School, are already using the Here Comes the Bus app, which provide real-time tracking for parents. Just yesterday, my child's bus was late again with no notice. One of the child's waiting became so cold that her mother had to leave work early to pick her up and make sure she was okay before the bus came. I truly believe that adopting the Here Comes the Bus app, I lost my face, sorry, that would be a great benefit for our students and families, helping to keep our children safe, warm, and informed while we wait for their buses each day. My question for you all today is, where are we now in this process? I was told three years ago through email that the goal was for it to take place the following school year, yet we still have not seen any progress.
I got great news. Tablets were installed on the first nine buses last week.
Okay.
So, it's going to take a little while to get 300 buses, to get the tablets all installed, but we are well on our way finally. So, got it.
Okay.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, question about like next school year, do you think?
I hope it's not that long.
Okay, thank you.
I hope it's not that long.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I just want to let you know that I am here because I want to commend the, all the teachers in the World Language Department at Northgate High School for their incredible hard work and collaboration, as we have covered an open position for a Spanish teacher. And I want you to understand that it has affected all teachers and all students that are in language classes, and that includes even French, because all of the department has had to jump in and cover a class, I mean, cover an entire day where we've had a sub in our own classrooms so that we can teach the other students so that they don't fall behind, which I think is a great solution. However, it is absolutely slowing the process down for all students. So, we're going to have to rework the entire curriculum, not just for our Spanish I classes that were affected, because it wasn't just our Spanish I classes, it was Spanish I through five that we're going to have to be looking at, and also our French I through whatever we end up getting through four or whatever, because our students have missed out in some instruction because we've been otherwise in other classes. So, it's made it particularly difficult, and that means we're going to be having to put a whole lot more work into reworking that curriculum, and it's going to be at least a two- to three-year minimum before we can get back on track to make up the deficit. And that is obviously very, very difficult. And I want to tell you that all of the teachers, every one of them, jumped in and did what we needed to do to contain the fire, and they have all worked beyond their contracts and in the process have saved the county probably several thousand dollars, but it is an unsustainable situation. And we have all been very excited that Karen Allen was offered the position back on 10-10, and we had hoped for an earlier approval for her employment, but realized it had been delayed. And in this time period, you know, we are concerned because that delay may affect, you know, we've been concerned that that may affect, you know, when she starts with us, does she finish the semester with us? Does she start in January? Or perhaps not at all? Because as you guys all know, if you've got a fish on the line, the longer you hold that fish over the water, the more likely that fish is going to jump. And so, we've been quite concerned about that. So, it is with great anticipation that we implore you to approve Ms. Karen Allen's employment this evening. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any board comments?
I would just like to say, thank you. I didn't address you. I talk really fast, but thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you and salute to all of the veterans that are out there. If you are a veteran and you have served, please stand up so that we can recognize you. If you were Army, and let me do it this way, if you are the family members of veterans, because I think that is so important as well. There you go, I knew you were in here. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. When you are family members, it directly affects you. I am the mother-in-law of an active-duty Army captain, active-duty Army Reserve captain, and I'm the daughter of an Air Force captain. And so, military is incredibly important and special to my family, so I want to say thank you for your service.
Any other board comments?
I'd just like to...
Go ahead.
Are we in board comments?
We're in board comments, yes. I kind of jumped into that. I was actually looking, asking for board comments to Ms. Ortega, but Ms. Dees jumped right into it, so we're good.
I said I talk fast.
I'd just like to thank the voters of Coweta County for approving, reapproving East Bloss. It's very important to our school system. Without that funding source for certain things, I don't know what we would do, but it wouldn't be a good situation. I just want to thank everybody.
Any other board comments? I do want to add, pile on to what Ms. Dees was saying to our veterans on this Veterans Day of, I know between our 3,000-plus educators that are employees of the system, of course, our parents, and our SROs that are in the schools every day, we've got a number of veterans. I'm sure we've got a lot of parents that are still serving, and we could not thank you enough. I'm wrapping up a 40-year career, working with the military nearly every day, and I tell you, it's made 40 years be a heck of a lot of fun. And, you know, I admire those many women that I'll get to work with every day and those that have served and now are serving again in a different role in the school system. Thank you very much, and you make what, you're the ones that make this country great. So, thank you. Any additional comments? With that, I have a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Have a good night.